I would like to open the virtual meeting of the City Council Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth and Elder Affairs today, Tuesday, December 22nd, 2020, 5:30 PM. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. I would like to start by thanking everyone for joining tonight.
If I may, could I take role?
Please.
Councilwoman Libby LaBeau?
Here.
Councilwoman Lee?
Here.
Chair Dion?
Thank you. I would like to thank everybody for being here tonight. I realize we're three days before Christmas. It's Christmas week, and for some of us, it may not have been an ideal day or time to have this meeting. But when I thought about it, the flip side of the coin is, I think that this week may be one of the most crucial times to have this meeting for those who need services and need to reach out. So for that, I thank all of you very much. Do we have any citizens input?
Yes, I have one. We have one citizen input from Colin Dias of 560 Ray Street in Fall River. Says, "Good afternoon, members of the Human Services Youth and Elder Affairs Committee. I just wish to state some strategies I would like to see the committee discuss today regarding aid to residents of our great city during this COVID-19 pandemic. As I am sure the committee will today discuss aid to the elderly and the immunocompromised, I wish to bring up some points I would like to see discussed. Number one, is there masks, gloves, and other PPE equipment being provided, or at least being attempted to be provided, to our homeless community in Fall River and the homeless shelter located in our city? Number two, what is being done to provide aid and support to our business community? I feel like this city is not doing enough to provide COVID aid and education to the small businesses in our communities. We can find the small businesses, but not the big chains, Wendy's, or McDonald's. I believe there is some hypocrisy there. Finally, we need to stop giving unlawful fines to city residents. I saw on social media this morning, a city resident was fined $300 for a first offense without warning, when it shouldn't at least been $100. This is a simple trash violation. We need to work to make these fines a last resort and work to educate and provide aid to our city residents during this time. Thank you very much. Respectfully submitted, Colin Dias."
Number two on our agenda is...
Councilwoman, I'm sorry. I had my hand raised just to respond.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Yeah, just to one of the questions or one of the parts of that citizen's input. I currently work as a therapist at the shelter, so I can just get firsthand knowledge that we do supply masks and gloves and sanitizer to the people who occupy the shelter there. First step in, just to give a heads up. Okay?
Thank you very much. That's very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second on our agenda, I would accept a motion to accept the minutes of our meeting from March 3rd, 2020.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Give a second.
Thank you.
On the motion to approve the minutes, Councilwoman Libby LaBeau?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Chair Dion?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Yes, three yes.
Thank you. Items number three and number four on our agenda are basically more of a housekeeping issue than anything else. Resolution number three was discussed. A resolution came out of that, and so basically, I would be accepting a motion for leave to withdraw.
Motion made.
Second.
Hold call.
On motion to grant leave to withdraw to item number three, Councilwoman Libby LaBeau?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Chair Dion?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Number four also is a housekeeping measure. With the onset of COVID, with schools being closed last year, now we're, we have a lot of remote learning. I think this is something that is probably not applicable at this point. So again, I would accept a motion to leave to withdraw of this item also.
Motion made.
Second.
Hold call, please.
Councilwoman Libby LaBeau?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Chair Dion?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number three, I'm sorry, number five. Could you please read the resolution on this one? Thank you.
Item number five is a resolution that was filed by Councilor Trot Lee. It states, "Whereas residents of the city of Fall River are facing hardships during COVID-19 pandemic with increasing needs for public resources, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth and Elder Affairs convene with representatives from the Mass Support Network and Bristol Elder Services, as well as Tess Curran, the city's Director of Health and Human Services, and other individuals the committee chair determines to be appropriate to provide information on resources that are available to the residents of Fall River."
Thank you. On this, I'm happy to say that we do have Tess Curran, the city's Director of Health and Human Services with us. We have Diane Thomas as a representative from Bristol Elders and from Mass Support Network. We have Elizabeth Rego and David Simmons. I'd like to thank you all for being here. I think I would like to have each person make their own presentation, explain to the people what they offer for services, how they can contact them. After each makes their presentation, we'll open it up for the committee members to ask questions or, you know, add to the conversation if that's acceptable to everyone. So with that, I would like to have the Director of Health and Human Services for the city introduce herself and explain her role.
Hi, thank you. Yes, my name is Tess Curran, and I'm the Director of the Health and Human Services Department. Right now, you know, our primary focus is COVID and contact tracing. Our office itself doesn't offer any direct support services to individuals in terms of any food needs or any other insecurities. However, we partner with community organizations, and right now, through the contact tracing initiative with the state, individuals who are in isolation and/or quarantine who need services are able to request those services through either our office or the Community Tracing Collaborative, which we're heavily utilizing at this point in time. And that really piggybacks off of the work that the United Way and other community members are doing. And this afternoon on a call with the state, the state is developing another initiative that will complement the work, from the sounds of it, that our community partners are doing right now. I don't have a lot of information on that. I am going to have a follow-up call tomorrow with that group in a smaller cohort where I can ask specific questions. But from the sounds of it, they were going to be working with, or piggybacking, like I said, off of the great work that our community partners are already doing. And when folks call our office who need support, we refer them to the community organizations like the United Way, 211, or other support services that we're aware of that we can connect individuals to.
Do you have any comments to make on the supply of PPE?
At this point in time, EMS, fire, and police have indicated on our regular task force calls that their PPE supplies are sufficient. On my weekly calls with the hospitals as well, they have indicated that their PPE supplies are sufficient as well, and there's no concerns there.
As opposed to last year, when things started out, it was rather difficult. But now, the suppliers seem to be keeping up with the supplies and the stream of obtaining supplies?
Yes, yeah. And if, you know, individuals in the community are having a difficult time securing masks or other PPE, but primarily masks, you know, they can certainly try and call our office or the mayor's office, and we can try and support them in that way. But masks kind of are our primary thing that, within the health department, that we're able to distribute. We don't have a ton of hand sanitizer and other things like that. Those are still hard to find in kind of those smaller containers. But certainly, if community members have any issues, then they should feel free to call the mayor's office or our office.
Do you have a contact number for people if they need to reach out?
Yes, our health department office phone number is 508-324-2410. And I don't know the mayor's phone office line off the top of my head, but I can try and pull that up. And our office just, you know, they do, our team is there from nine to five Monday through Thursday, and then nine to three on Fridays, and that follows the city hall schedule. Now, let me just pull up the mayor's office phone number. That number is 508-324-2600 is the mayor's office line.
At this time, I would open this up to the committee members if either one would like to ask any questions or make any comment.
Council Vice President can go first if she chooses.
Just had a question, Tess. Did you say you were going to have an update tomorrow?
So I have a meeting with the large cities. The health directors of the large cities have a call tomorrow from 12 to 1, where somebody from the Food Insecurity Program from the state will be presenting to us, as far as I'm told. So I'll gain more information about that new initiative that's run by the state tomorrow during that 12 to 1 o'clock window.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Curran, first, just want to say that we receive your emails every single day, and we always appreciate the efforts that you put forth to inform us on what's going on in the city, especially regarding this situation. I have questions about contact tracing. How frequently or how often are we checking in on the businesses in our city to make sure that they're keeping track? Have we had any success with that process at all?
Keeping track in terms of positive employees that they have?
Yep. And maybe some tracing back to where, if someone is positive in one area, we're able to track where they may have possibly contracted.
Yeah, so our office works day in and day out, either basically notifying that if we find out that somebody is an employee of a business, that we contact that business, they have to then close for cleaning. And then we work with the manager to help who identify any contacts that that individual had in the workplace, and then those individuals are then instructed to quarantine. So we work with businesses, you know, day in and day out. We also have the Inspection Services Division, who's responsible to help kind of in the field, and they follow up directly with those businesses, making sure that they're compliant with the COVID safety standards, and that they are, in fact, shutting down as needed and cleaning when they have a positive case.
So if an employee at a company finds out that they tested positive, do they contact you right away, or does the business contact you? Is that how that works?
Yeah, so the business is required to contact the health department, and that's outlined by the protocols and safety standards that the state has put forward for businesses. They're required to notify us. The other way we find out is if a resident works at a Fall River business, and then during the contact tracing process, they identify, you know, I work at X business or X restaurant, then we follow up that way. So it's really a, it's supposed to be a twofold kind of reporting process that allows us to make sure that we're effectively getting in touch with businesses so that we can work to have them shut it down, have them clean, and then do any contact tracing for other employees. And if, you know, the system is working appropriately, you know, say if somebody works at a Fall River business but lives in a neighboring community, then that neighboring community, once they do the contact tracing and identify that, you know, there's a, they work at a Fall River establishment, that other community then shares that case with us so that we're aware that there's an individual who works in our community who's positive.
And this is a private, like this is something where if a person is positive, and they report that they work at a place or something to that nature, they still have the ability to keep their names private according to HIPAA and things like that, correct?
Yes. Can you hear me? My internet seems to be fading on me.
I can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, I just got an alert that my internet was fading. Yes, so, yes, we do not identify specific contacts. When, if we call a business, we would say, "An employee of yours tested positive on this day, and they worked these days." So anybody who may have been in contact with this individual, or, you know, a individual who worked these days, would then have to be quarantined. Most often, people are notifying their employer that they're positive. So we call the employer, and their employee has already told their manager that they are positive. And that helps with the process because there can be delays in testing and reporting, that, you know, we encourage anybody who is positive to inform their manager or their business so that they can take the initiative and get folks who they were in contact with out of the workplace so that there's less of a risk of transmission.
Okay. And the last piece I just had on that is the mass COVID team. When a person tests positive, you relay that back to the mass COVID team, correct? Or the state, I should say. I think she froze there. Either she froze, or I stumbled upon the question, which I know that's not true at all, so.
I think her internet faded out on us.
Yeah, I'll yield the floor, Council, and if she can get back to us on it anytime she wants. Thank you.
Yeah, wait a minute, maybe she's coming back. I see her name again. We'll give her a second. If not, we can move on, and if she comes back, we'll go back to her.
Yep. Yeah, my question was just based on the coordination between the city and state when people test positive. That's basically, I believe, how they get most of their statistics is when situations like that occur.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I'm not sure what's going on with my internet. Usually, I'm right next to the router, too. So I apologize, Councilor. You cut out when you mentioned the mass COVID team.
Yeah, I was saying that when people, if you have a positive result, I know that the mass COVID team contacts that person on a regular basis to check in on their symptoms. And I'm assuming that they get that information from either your office or from the city itself when somebody is tested positive.
Yeah, that's right. So basically, what happens is when someone gets tested for COVID, the lab is required to report that immediately. There's kind of a different timetable for different diseases, but coronavirus, it requires an immediate report. So once the lab gets that information, they send it to the State Department of Public Health, and then we, the State Department of Public Health disseminates all the information for Fall River residents. So we only get information for Fall River residents. We don't get any, you know, other residents. Once we get that, we have to notify, like basically, indicate that we received that, and then we can either own that case, or we can send that case to the CTC, which we've been relying on a lot more now, just because of the amount of cases and our limited staff. So that's basically how the process works, that once it's reported to the lab, the state then sends it to us, and then we either do the contact tracing and follow up with individuals, or we send it to the CTC, and they do the contact tracing. Right now, they're kind of in a search capacity. So they, if their case is sent to the CTC, everybody gets at least a text message, and then they try and follow up with a phone call. They make six phone calls, and then if they can't reach that individual, then they send it back to us.
Okay. And we get this information every day, and it's posted online, and it's all over the internet. So we, I think that it's important, and I appreciate that you did explain that data gathering process, because I don't think everyone always has those details. So with that, again, I yield, and thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. So with the contract tracing, what type of contact actually necessitates quarantining or for the person to be contacted when they've been near someone that's tested positive for COVID?
Sure. So to be, to meet the criteria of a close contact by the DPH standards, you have to be within six feet of a COVID-positive individual for 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period, and that's within six feet with or without a mask. So say, you know, I'm positive, and I had contact with you, Councilor, you know, 10 minutes yesterday and five minutes the day before, then you would meet that criteria. And close contact, meaning that six feet with or without a mask. That would then require you to quarantine. And we go back two days prior to symptom onset, or if I'm asymptomatic, two days prior to my test date. And that's the date you receive, the date you were tested, not the date you receive your results. And so what's really critical, and what we really all have to keep up with and remember, is that that criteria, it's with or without the mask. So the distance is so important, and it's not only just the mask wearing, which is really critical, but it's also making sure that you're keeping that distance. And we see it time and time again. People let their guard down. They think that their friends, their close friends or their family are, you know, safe, and that, you know, these kind of casual encounters won't amount to anything. But clearly, after Thanksgiving and these small social gatherings, they are really big drivers of transmission. And so, especially with the upcoming holidays, you know, I can't encourage folks enough to limit their contacts. Don't gather with anybody outside of your household. You know, we're all, unfortunately, at risk, especially with our case counts right now, and we have to really all do the right thing.
Now, with the cold weather, how does the outside and inside compare? I know with the warmer weather and the UV rays, it was much safer to be outside, but with the cold weather and fewer UV rays, it kind of changes things. So how does that compare at this point?
So if, I would still encourage anybody to be outside. I don't know any data behind the UV rays, but the outside allows, you know, the respiratory droplets to disperse quicker than being indoors. Even the data indicates that if you are indoors, you should open the windows and keep doors open, even in the cooler weather. So while I discourage anybody to have a gathering at any of the upcoming holidays, if you are going to have people that you don't live with in your home, you should keep all of your windows open, because that airflow will help to disperse those respiratory droplets. Because there are seeing, we are seeing data now that indicates that these indoor settings where people are speaking, the droplets are lingering in the air for a longer time, which then poses a higher risk for transmission, even if you weren't within that six feet. So to the extent that people can go outdoors, if they're going to see any family member, if you can sit in a garage or in a, you know, a driveway, wear your mask and maintain, you know, an adequate distance, that's really the only safe option this holiday season. And even that, I really would advise people try not to do that. A lot of times, we see people just let their guard down, and that's when transmission occurs. So there is kind of more data coming out now, and this is really why the restaurant's capacity has even decreased today. The governor announced that they're decreasing the capacity in indoor dining, because we are seeing this transmission in some indoor settings that is a bit concerning.
And I know originally, they talked about a 14-day quarantine, and then they were discussing cutting it back to a 10-day quarantine. What has happened with that?
Sure, yeah. So the quarantine has changed. Right now, if, there's three options for quarantine. The first option is you get tested no sooner than day five of your quarantine, and the date of exposure is day zero. So if I am COVID-positive today, and I have, you know, a coworker that I expose, today would be her day zero, and just one, two, three, four, five. The earliest she could get tested would be the 27th. So I'm just kind of giving you an example. But provided that test no sooner than the fifth day of quarantine comes back negative, then an individual can be released from quarantine on day eight. So on day eight, somebody could go to the grocery store, go back to work, or whatever it may be. The other, the second option is if somebody doesn't want to get tested, then it's a 10-day quarantine, the date of exposure being day zero, and then you count 10 days out. The final quarantine option is if you have any symptoms, regardless of a negative test, you have to quarantine for the full 14 days. So that's even a mild, you know, little runny nose, little sore throat, any kind of stomach issues, that's a 14-day quarantine. And those are really the options at this point in time, and we may see that change. Hopefully, people will be more compliant with quarantines. You know, that has been an issue here in Fall River and across, you know, Massachusetts and the country. People feel okay, so they think, well, I can, you know, quickly run to the store while I'm in quarantine, and that is, that is, individuals who are doing that are breaking mass general laws.
My last question is, let's assume I own a business. I, myself, or an employee, tests positive for COVID. Is it required under law for me to sanitize and deep-clean my premises, or is it optional?
So those are, the cleaning is in the standard. So it's, while it isn't a law, it is required by the governor's standards that have division of labor standards that have been put forth. So it's not written in, like it's not a mass general law, but it isn't guidance. It's a standard, which is, you know, enforceable by the Board of Health. So if somebody has a COVID-positive and is refusing to clean, then we can take action, because it's a standard.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay, I thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And enjoy your holidays.
Thank you, you as well.
Thank you. So we have Diane Thomas from Bristol Elders with us. If she would identify herself, give us an address, and explain what you have to offer for us tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us. Diane Thomas. I'm the Home Care Director at Bristol Elder Services, and I'm joined tonight by our program, Nutrition Program Director, Deborah Avila Carrera. So we're going to talk a little bit about the programs that Bristol has to offer. As most of you know, Bristol Elder Services is designated as one of 25 aging service access points in the state, and we provide services to consumers in 15 local communities, of course, Fall River being one of them. And our goal is to assist elders in living within their environment, supporting them, maintaining them in the community, and to provide just advocacy on their behalf. As you can imagine, the last few months has brought a lot of challenges in terms of the way we provide services. It keeps changing from day to day in terms of, you know, in March, when we first kind of had to adapt to the different model, working remotely, working in terms of providing services, to a little bit of a lull in the summer, to an increase in about, just about everything in terms of service needs, in terms of referrals, within the last few months. So we continue to adapt based on the needs of our consumers. So our goal tonight is to talk a little bit about the services that we have at Bristol, some of the initiatives that have been put forth in the pandemic, during this pandemic, and how we continue to try to strive our residents in the community. I think we're going to begin, I think Debbie, you want to talk a little bit about the nutrition program?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. I'm Debbie Avila Carrero, Nutrition Program Director, as Diane said, and...
Thank you for joining us.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Thank you for joining us." I said, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Um, as Diane said, the nutrition program, uh, we basically serve elders living in greater Fall River, Attleboro, and Ton areas. And the program is available for anyone who is sixty and over. Uh, the program provides nutrition services to assist an elder to cope with their daily challenges. This could include a poor diet, health problem, and those that are homebound or self-isolating due to COVID nineteen. The program offers nourishing meals that are planned by a nutritionist and comply with Elder Affairs, um, and new policy nutrition standards. Right now, we have a regular and modified meal. And the only difference with the modified meal is that it's a sugar-free dessert that comes with the meal. We also have therapeutic meals, which is a pure raid meal and a real meal. Um, and we also have kosher meals. In Fall River, we actually have a contract with a Fall River Jewish home. So people get a hot meal from there if, uh, they meet the requirements to get that kosher meal. We also provide, um, a box of shelf-stable meals to all of our consumers. In in the box, we have three shelf-stable meals. And that is used when we aren't able to deliver the meals. Just last week, we actually weren't able to deliver because of the snowstorm. I think that was Thursday, but everything gets rolled up into one big day sometimes. Uh, so we did a robo-call to all of our consumers and just let them know that we weren't going to be delivering the meals due to the storm. And they could use a shelf-stable meal. Um, we have been really lucky. We've worked really hard and we have delivered the meals every day during the pandemic. What we've done is we actually gave all of our drivers and volunteers masks, gloves, and hand sanitizer. And we gave them, um, something that they can sanitize their car with. And we basically have put in a lot of different restrictions in when our drivers come in to pick up the meal at the sites and deliver them. Um, we only allow so many people into our sites. So that way that, you know, they stay in their car until they're called to come in and pick up the meals. We had to retrain everybody. It's like Diane said, everything kind of changes on a daily basis. But we had to retrain all of our drivers and volunteers on how to deliver the meal. So it was kind of like they were dropping the meal off at the person's door, stepping back, making sure that somebody was coming to get the meal. Um, and then, you know, if somebody wasn't coming, obviously get that meal because we don't leave a meal behind and call in the office. So we're still trying to make contact with them. Um, you know, even though we're telling all of them to be six feet away from people. So, um, we asked some of the people to kind of like go to the door, step back from the porch, or if they live in apartment buildings, just step away from the door and see if that the person came to get the meal. Um, but it's been on changing, but we still doing that. We still have masks and gloves that we supply to everyone that delivers the meals. Uh, the congregate sites have been suspended since March just because of the danger of having visitors enter housing and senior sites. But we do have a grab and go at Mitchell Heights. So anybody that needs a meal, um, they can come to that site and grab a meal. And then they agree that they're going to be going home afterwards to heat up the meal that we, uh, give them. During this, what we started some new initiatives. Um, Diane knows about our snack packs. Um, so basically, we started the snack packs and it was, um, something just to increase, um, the meal and nutritional options of the home delivered meal, uh, for individuals. Um, and everyone that receives the home delivered meals can, um, get the snack pack. And basically, it just has five different snacks in there. It could be raisins, cereal, peanut butter crackers, and, um, some other things that sometimes we offer. And they get that once a week, uh, through the help of the Nutrition Director at Elder Affairs. We also participated in the USDA Farmers to Family Box Grants. Um, in this summer, we delivered thirty boxes to individuals in Fall River. And just this last week, we actually delivered another sixty boxes to seniors in Fall River. And the boxes included, uh, fresh produce, milk, and protein. This past summer, we also distributed the farmer's market coupons. Um, and each coupon booklet is worth twenty-five dollars. We did let individuals know, uh, where the farmers markets were, but I think that people just had a difficult time getting there because of transportation. We only had three farmers markets in, um, Fall River that were open. I think Kennedy Park opened later in August. Um, so I I think because of COVID nineteen, it was something that wasn't very successful this year. Um, the new, and issue that we also have is we actually received a grant from the city of Fall River from the Community Development Agency. And it's a grant that's, um, to help low-income residents of Fall River who are, it's a two-part grant for individuals who are sixty and under. They can actually receive, um, the home delivered meals three times a week. And they have to be impacted by COVID and meet the financial requirements. And for individuals that are sixty and over, we have bags of food, uh, for one day's meal. Um, and that's, they can come to the site and grab the bags, or we can deliver it to them. And that's on Wednesdays and Fridays. We also, um, have handed out crossword puzzles and adult coloring books for all of our consumers that receive the meals and for any, any individual in the CDA program. So if anyone has any questions about the programs, they can always call our information referral team. And we can give out that number, and that number is like one seven seven four six two seven one three nine zero. And just in talking about the information referral team, they provide information on a wide range of community-based services and programs that are available to elders and their families. During the pandemic, the team has received a lot of calls and that focus on food insecurity and housing resources. But, um, our team is a central source of information for all services available in our service area. I know that I myself have used them. Sometimes I just need to get a list of food pantries that I can give some of our clients. Um, and sometimes, you know, they're not older adults, they're just individuals that are calling that need help. Um, so I can get that information from our information referral team and then just email it to whoever calls us. And they usually get that information out within the day that they receive the call. And I think Diane is going to talk about our caregiver program and our home care program.
I just one question. Did you say that you're servicing people under the age of sixty also?
Yes. So we have a grant through the city of Fall River, the Community Development Agency. Um, and the grant that we received is a two-part grant. We can actually deliver meals to individuals who are sixty and under that have been impacted by COVID nineteen. And they just have to fill out a really simple form. It's, I need the income eligibility, basically, but, um, everyone that has called, um, has met it. So they have to be disabled, have a COVID nineteen impact, and need the income eligibility. And right now, uh, we can service twenty-five individuals. So, I mean, we've tried to get that information out there to everyone, but we, you know, um, only have eight individuals that are receiving the meals. So if you know of anybody that needs that, they can call our, um, information referral hotline.
Again, that, and again, that number was seven seven four six two seven one three nine zero?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. You're probably going to hear that number a few more times before. Um, and I want, I wanted to start off with the nutrition program because food security has been such an issue, on an issue of concern. So we wanted to get that information out there first. Uh, first, from a financial aspect, and also from an accessibility issue as more, you know, then as people have more difficulty get going to the grocery store, or more concerns going to the grocery store. So there are a lot of options in terms of food security that the nutrition program has offered. Um, in addition to those other services, I wanted to speak about some of the other programs that we have in-house, one of them being our caregiver program. Uh, and it's not necessarily something that people necessarily think off the bat when, uh, talking about Bristol Elder Services. But our caregiver program is specifically designed for individuals who are caring for somebody. If they are an adult over the age of eighteen, they're caring for somebody who's sixty and has a diagnosis of dementia. Or it could be a grandparent over the age of fifty-five taking care of their grandchildren under the age of eighteen. Or it could be a parent or grandparent over the age of fifty-five who's taking care of an adult child between the ages of eighteen to fifty-nine. The goal of the caregiver program is to provide support, advocacy, resource, and knowledge for caregivers. It could be, um, simple question, not simple, of course, but someone may be looking for services to give them some relief, some respite care. Uh, so they're looking for someone to come in for a few hours a day. So our caregiver specialist does a one-on-one kind of consultation with caregivers to give them those needed resources. You may have somebody who's newly diagnosed with dementia, and the caregiver may need some information on how to best work with that care recipient in their home. So our caregiver specialist provides them educational resources or sometimes support groups. Um, we also work with grandparents who, again, are raising grandchildren under the age of eighteen. So they might be looking for local community supports. I know we've accessed Catholic Social Services and the Boys and Girls Club in the past, too, in looking for resources. Uh, while servicing individuals in the caregiver program during this pandemic, we've noticed, um, great concerns with isolation. We've had caregivers who had other supports, perhaps, who had individuals, family members assisting with the care of the person, their loved one, uh, but now can't do it or not able to visit the way they used to. So that has been something that our caregiver specialist has continued to work with. She set up one-on-one sessions to kind of develop a care plan, really try to encourage services in the home, if appropriate, for those caregivers to give them the break. We've also, what has been nice is that there's been a lot of, uh, virtual support group programs being run. Uh, a lot of information from the Alzheimer's Association about those virtual support groups for caregivers. Um, as many of you know, our, many of our Adult Day Health programs closed in the city for a number of months in the beginning of the pandemic. Um, they, some have reopened in the meantime, some continue to do remote services. So of course, this affected many of our caregivers and our clients. So again, we're trying to kind of shift whether if they went to Adult Day Health program, perhaps now we can provide in-home services to them. So we try to connect them to those programs that would best meet their needs. So again, we've been seeing a rise kind of with our caregiver referrals over the last few months to kind of help with those issues. The services provided by the caregiver program are free. So it's a free consultation, and they'll help you connect you to community resources. Um, the other program discussed is the home care program. So our home care program is where we provide services to elders who are over the age of sixty in the community, or if you're under sixty with an Alzheimer's disease-related diagnosis. Trained care manager does an assessment of needs. And based on eligibility criteria set forth from the state, we determine if someone's eligible for services, and then we implement services that are needed. The most common services, as you can imagine, are homemaking. So someone to come in, do your housework, laundry, shopping, um, meal preparation if needed. And then your personal care needs, your bathing, personal, your personal hygiene, bathing, dressing, and continence care if needed. So those are the most typical services we provide. Of course, as Debbie mentioned, through our home care program, we also provide meals. We provide laundry services, um, we assist with lifeline units. And we also connect individuals to Adult Day Health programs if needed as well, too. Throughout the past several months, we've been able to continue with those services. Uh, again, as we've mentioned several times, there's been a lot of ebbs and flows. Uh, in March and April, we saw a decline in numbers in terms of referrals coming into the home care program. Uh, and that was very often because consumers, family members were concerned about people coming into their home. Uh, so we kind of encountered that. Uh, we also had clients who were existing clients who had services suspended. Again, they they didn't want somebody in their home, even though they had somebody before. Most of the time, family members were assisting. Uh, so we've kind of dealt with those issues along the way. Again, over the summer months, um, we saw our referrals come up again in terms of, A, I think there was a great need because I've been extended period of time. And also, I think there was a realization that, um, this was going to continue going forward. So people had to make a decision whether they have that immediate need for services or not. So again, we started seeing our referrals come up. Uh, again, we've continued to provide services as needed to individuals with homemaking and personal care services. We, for individuals who may not be comfortable with somebody coming in their home from one of our vendor agencies, we've tried to set up some alternative services. Um, the state did provide some alternatives, for instance, necessity shopping. So maybe you don't want some to do a full grocery shopping, but they can go to stores to get you some toiletries and, uh, kind of no-contact shopping where they just drop it off at the home, so that way you don't have to go to the grocery store. So we've kind of adjusted that. We've offered services such as, um, companion, whether if they don't want it in person, they can have telehealth companion, uh, so someone can give them a call or check with them. It can be virtual as well, too, uh, to check in on them and see how they're doing. So that's some of the services. One of the things that we've also seen a shift in over the past few months, we, uh, we have Bristol Offer Program through, um, through home care called Consumer Directed Care, where someone can hire a family member, a friend, or an acquaintance to provide care for them. So some people have opted to go that route, someone that they're comfortable with, uh, that they're familiar with, instead of somebody from an agency come in and provide care to them. So that's another option as well for our consumers that we've tried to promote. Workers that go in the home to service the clients, they're all equipped with PPE. I think you mentioned earlier, I think, all the vendors that we work with, uh, initially had some issues in terms of securing the PPE. But over the past several months, they've all been able to secure and receive the funding to secure PPE for their workers that go into the home. We at Bristol have also secured PPE, Personal Protection Equipment, for our staff. Uh, so as they've done home visits with consumers, that they're equipped PPE and they have enough to share with a consumer, so they can put their mask on as well, too. So we've, I try to say, we've tried to provide as regular and normal services as we can. Uh, but we've had to make several adjustments along the way. Um, you know, the challenges, again, challenges continue. There has been some availability issues with our vendor agencies. We've somehow maintained and been able to service four thousand consumers uh, through our various programs at Bristol Elder Services. But sometimes there's a little bit of a wait time to start services. Uh, so that's something to take into consideration because our vendor agencies have encountered the same issues as other agencies, where some of their workers, um, you know, they they, uh, face staffing shortages. Um, and and also, just with our home care program, I just wanted to mention that we, there may be a copayment to pay for services, depending on somebody's financial income, how much they earn per year. But that's something, again, that we try to work with individuals if there is any hardship with that as well. Um, again, the number to call if somebody is interested in services is that number again, one seven seven four six two seven one three nine oh. Uh, it's the main number. They'll connect you to the home care department, uh, if you would like to be assessed for services. Just touching upon, I'm sure you might have some questions regarding that. Just touching upon some of the other programs that we have at Bristol Elder Services. Uh, we have our Protective Services Department as well. Protective Services Department is to help individuals over the age of sixties who are in crisis. Um, and that might be to, through financial exploitation, sexual, emotional, physical, uh, abuse. So if anybody has any concerns about elder, the number to call is one eight hundred nine two 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 seven five. That is the Massachusetts hotline to report elder abuse. Um, cases investigated in our fifteen are investigated in our, um, Protective Services Department themselves. But the number, again, to report is one eight hundred nine two 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 seven five. And again, our elders have faced many of the ongoing concerns, you know, in terms of concerns about abuse. Uh, but we've also seen increased situations such as homelessness amongst our elders. Uh, and that is something that our crisis team has worked to try to develop different resources to assist elders who might be having homelessness to secure a home for them. Um, and just very quickly to touch upon our Ombudsman Program. For those of you who are not familiar, are advocates who work with residents in nursing facilities. So in the past, we have our Ombudsman Program Director, and we have volunteers who visit, pre-pandemic, who visited nursing facilities, who advocated for residents, if there was a concern from a resident or a family member, they would facilitate, you know, communication with the nursing home and that family member. Um, that has obviously been a huge concern for families, uh, as many restrictions has been put on the nursing home, concerns regarding care of residents in the nursing home, simply because family members can't visit those residents. So that certainly has been a concern. And while the visits in terms of the nursing facilities may be restricted, even with our ombudsman, she has been in connection, continues weekly to be in connection with all the nursing facilities to get a kind of temperature in terms of what's been going on in the facilities. Uh, she has left postcards, all postcards were distributed to the nursing facilities that we work with in our communities with the number for the ombudsman. So if there's any resident who, um, who has any concern, that they can report back. And again, family members who have any concerns about any particular nursing facilities are also encouraged to call our ombudsman. So again, just touching upon some of the several different programs that we have at Bristol. Kind of open it up to any questions that you may have on any of them.
I do have one, um, that comes to the top of my head. So not all of your services are necessarily income-based. In other words, you have some people that do have some resources that are still able to, um, acquire services. Is that correct? Because you said that there's copays involved, so.
It is. There is no financial, uh, requirement in terms of, anybody can apply for services. So you can make a hundred thousand dollars and still apply for services. It's just typically the higher amount of money that you make, you may have a higher copayment to pay for services. I will also say that any I will also say that any individual who is on mass health does not pay a copayment for services as well, too. So it is income-based, but everybody is eligible, you just may have a higher copayment.
That's good to know because I think a lot of people are, are under the impression that it has to be a, a low-income individual to be able to access your services. So that's definitely good to know. And you talked, you spoke a lot about Alzheimer's, but what, in the case of somebody who suddenly has an illness that basically, that they can't, you know, that, that they're not, that, that they need a lot of services now, that they're basically disabled from this onset of illness, and they would want to have a, a, a family member be their caretaker, is that something that's possible and how does somebody go about that?
It's certainly possible. I, I think, one of you think, I've been in the human services for twenty years, working with elders, and the wonderful thing now is that there's so many more services and programs available for individuals to support and maintain them in their home. There is the state program, the Personal Care Attendant Program, and that is for clients who are on mass health. And that is one option for individuals to get paid for. So it's an assessment done by the PCA program itself to determine how many hours can be provided in their home. And then that individual can choose a caregiver, family member, somebody that they know to provide care for them. The unique part with our Consumer Directed Care Program in-house is that it does not have to be a mass health client. So they don't have to have necessarily even extensive needs. If you needed, you know, you wanted someone to assist you with homemaking, to do housework, laundry, and shopping, and you felt more comfortable with your granddaughter doing it as opposed to a vendor agency, you can hire them. But it also is intended for somebody who may have those enhanced needs, as you mentioned. And through some programs that we have internally that we are able to support them a little bit more with higher budgets, they could hire somebody to be their own worker. So it's a little bit more capped in terms of the Home Care Program because we do have to follow certain budgets. But it's certainly a possibility, as you said.
Counselor Lee, Vice President LeBeau, any questions?
I did. As far as the mass health required, you said people who have mass health do not need to fill out a financial requirement form, is that correct?
We, we have a system that we can verify someone's Medicaid eligibility. So if we know that they are Medicaid eligible, then they do not pay a copayment to Bristol.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And again, if you had any questions regarding eligibility, every year the, the income changes, please certainly call that central number that we talked about. And that's one of the kind of benefits, as Debbie had mentioned about intake team, they kind of do an assessment right there to determine some eligibility factors or to refer you to certain programs to determine that.
Oh, I, I did, I'm sorry, I yelled, yeah.
I'm sorry, okay, thank you. Vice President LeBeau, any questions? No? Okay, I thank you very much for your presentation. And again, I mean, it was very enlightening, very informative. I definitely learned a few things I had no idea about and I didn't, I don't think I realized how extensive and how many services that you do offer. So thank you very much for your time and enjoy your holidays as well.
Thank you for having us.
That brings us to, thank you for being very patient. Mass Support Network, Elizabeth Rego and David Simmons. Thank you for your patience and we will now listen and be enlightened by you.
No problem. Thank you so much for having us here. My name is Liz, I go by Liz, and I am an MSW and I am also the Southeast Team Leader for Mass Support. And I have with me my colleague, David. And David, I'll let you introduce yourself.
I'm David Simons, I'm an Outreach Crisis Counselor with Mass Support and also a Certified Peer Specialist and Certified Addiction Recovery Coach.
I have a very short presentation for all of you. I won't take up much of your time, but this is, this is perfect, listening to Diane and Deborah. I think this, this is a great opportunity to talk about Mass Support and how it came about. So I'm going to just try to share my screen with everybody, if I can. Can you see that? Can everyone see that? Okay, so Mass Support came about because of COVID-19, and it's a trauma response program. It is basically, so I think you're all familiar with FEMA. And so how it came about was this program is in partnership actually with FEMA, DMH, and Riverside's Trauma Center. And so usually if a disaster happens of some sort, a national disaster, or if we have some kind of hurricane, tornado, we have folks going door-to-door, you know, talking to people, asking them if they're okay, if they're in need of any food, you know, shelter. They're talking to them, they're trying to get them resources. But because of COVID-19 and us having to physically distance ourselves, we are doing everything via Zoom or through phone calls or emails. So a little bit about the program. Not a little bit, a lot, actually. So it is in partnership with FEMA, MEMA, and Department of Mental Health and Riverside Community Care. What we're offering through this program is free, anonymous, confidential outreach. And the way we're doing that is through one-to-one brief support, right? And the program is offered to all of Massachusetts residents. So basically, there is seven teams located all over Massachusetts with approximately about seven to eight people in those teams, including a team lead. And all the members of the team are, we have trainings on PFA, which is Psychological First Aid and Skills for Psychological Recovery. And that's something we do when individuals call our eight-eight-eight number and they're in need of talking to someone because they're just feeling anxious or, or maybe even depressed. You know, social distancing right now is causing a lot of that, it's causing a lot of anxiety. And so we are trained to talk to individuals that are feeling and reacting to COVID-19 and help them kind of just normalize what's going on and validate their feelings and let them know that, you know, it's something that a lot of people are experiencing and that they're not alone. With that being said, if the individual then needs referrals to ongoing services, so I'm going to give you an example. A lot of calls that we are getting are for heating assistance, housing. We have some, some calls that have been coming in with the elderly being very secluded and feeling very alone, not being able to see their family and loved ones, and they're feeling anxiety and just all kinds of emotional feelings throughout this time. And so we are there to talk to them, we are there to also refer them to ongoing services if needed. So we, we act as a bridge as well to other services for individuals that call us. We have been reaching out to organizations such as Bristol Elders Services. We've been in touch with Council on Aging as well, reached out to them and told them that we are available for coping groups as well, not only for the people they are serving, but for their staff as well. And so these coping groups are available for adults, children, youth, employees, and communities throughout Massachusetts. The educational presentations on traumatic stress and resilience building is also something that we are doing through Zoom. All of this is basically through Zoom. There was a time there that we were going over to nursing homes or to, you know, do some outreach on foot. Now, because of the increased cases on COVID, unfortunately, we are limiting our services to telephone, email, or via Zoom. Do you want to say that our teams are made up of wonderful, diverse individuals that also speak multi languages? So as you can see, we have coverage in English, Spanish, Portuguese, Amharic, and Haitian Creole, Vietnamese, French, and Swahili. I myself speak fluent Portuguese, so on the team, if any of those calls come in and it's an individual who speaks fluent Portuguese, it's usually directed to myself. Another thing is, we do have peer specialists and a certified recovery coach, which I'd like David to go ahead and just give us a brief description of what that is because that is extremely, extremely important during this time as well, where cases of overdoses are increasing. Suicide cases have been increasing as well. And we are so fortunate to have individuals working at Mass Support that can help individuals that are, you know, that need some assistance with that as well. So Dave, if you want to just go ahead and talk about that?
Sure. As a Certified Peer Specialist and a Recovery Coach, I, I can utilize my lived experience as a person in long-term recovery to connect with people on a level with somebody who hasn't experienced those things in a, in a different manner. Having had that experience, you know, I can help motivate people, build that peer connection with them with somebody they feel can understand who's been through similar situations and help guide them to resources and give them support with their looking for treatment or substance use or mental health resources within their community. The pandemic has, you know, has had people seeking less to go find support on their own. That's why some of these numbers are climbing with all the restrictions that are put in place is, is been a barrier to people and a barrier to people knowing how to get connected. So Mass Support can help fill that, fill that void with people feeling connection with somebody who's been through it and also guiding that person on, you know, how to obtain treatment or how to attain medicated-supported recovery and things of that nature.
I would imagine that isolation has been a driving force.
Absolutely. So meetings, your typical twelve-step fellowships from Narcotics Anonymous or Alcoholics Anonymous. With the restrictions, the churches that used to host meetings like this aren't hosting in-person meetings. A lot of support has gone to Zoom. A lot of people may not feel comfortable utilizing Zoom to, you know, get the support. A lot of people early in recovery or in recovery have, you know, withdrawn a bit and it's been detrimental. A lot of people have maybe relapsed because of not being able to remain connected. Remaining connected in fellowship is a big part of recovery and that's been a barrier for people to remain connected.
Unfortunately, I don't think there's a way to participate in Zoom and be anonymous at the same time.
Well, you're not anonymous to those within the meeting.
Right.
You can use your first name, last initial, like we have our names posted. You can use an alias if you wanted to. You don't have to present on camera also, so you, you can remain anonymous on Zoom.
I only bring that up because maybe, you know, some people, at, at least initially, would feel more comfortable until they're comfortable in their own skin with the whole process.
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to let you know, so we are, our voicemail, the eight-eight-eight number that you can reach us at, we run from eight in the morning to eight PM at night, Monday through Saturday. And usually how that works is the caller leaves a voicemail. They could reach us by email as, as well. And usually what happens is the teams rotate and they take call. And the team leaders, they take these calls and then they disperse them over to wherever the person's calling from. So say someone's calling me from like Chicopee, I would go ahead and forward the call maybe to a team member who's in Chicopee so they could connect that person to certain resources that they're looking for. I do want to make this very clear that this is not a, it's not meant to be therapy. It's not a therapy session, but we do get calls with individuals that just need to talk and just need to vent. And we do have licensed clinicians on our teams that do stay online with individuals. They help them process certain feelings and reactions. And we do follow-ups if the individual would like us to do so. Because again, this is, this is an anonymous, free, confidential, and we don't keep any records on who we're talking to. And so we definitely want to, you know, be transparent to the person. And a lot of times, people are calling us for resources, but, you know, they end up just wanting to talk, too. The isolation is just, it's, it's, it's terrible and people are just feeling so alone right now. And so what we like to say also at Mass Support, you know, physical distancing, absolutely, wear your mask, you know, wash your hands, follow the guidelines, but continue to be social with one another. And there's ways around that, right? We're learning through Zoom, text messaging. You know, people are starting to maybe write letters again and postcards to one another and cards. And, you know, they're just, you're just doing it a different way, right? So the last slide is just our information. We can be followed on social media as well. I would like to let you know that we have several town halls posted on Facebook. We had a, an enormous town hall just last week on housing where the Assistant Attorney General's Office was there. We had some individuals from Homebase and Raft also there answering questions and doing presentations. We've had like over a thousand-something views. We had an enormous night of, of people having questions and, and watching that town hall. So there's town halls coming up everywhere with Mass Support to help folks throughout this difficult time. I have my name and information here, I have David's name and information here as well. If you'd like to contact us with any other questions or concerns. We definitely like to collaborate with services that were mentioned here just to have those resources available to individuals that call us as well. So I, I thank you so much for having us here and letting us know that information.
Oh, I thank you for taking part in this, it's, you know, very important. You know, any, all resources, any resources that, that people can have, any assistance that people can get, especially during this time, is crucial. So again, I mean, you know, Christmas week, I really appreciate that you were able to take part. Does anybody have any questions? Counselor Lee?
Yeah, just for, just for Mr. Simmons, I, I wanted to know how, have you seen, because you said you, you're using your experience and I know where, I know that you, you do a lot of work regarding recovery. And have you seen, have you noticed a marked increase in demand for counseling or for services based on the COVID situation? Or has it been the same or has there been a, a decline at all?
Initially on, there was a decline, like I was saying, people weren't seeking service as much in the beginning when COVID first came and the restrictions were put in play. I also work at Peer-to-Peer Recovery Support Center in Fall River and that's where I'm speaking from my experience from that. People didn't transition well right away to, you know, going to Zoom. People like to fellowship and like to receive service for recovery supports in person. Connection's very important in recovery. And that connection over Zoom, while it's a good tool, is not the same. So we saw a decline and then we saw it slowly build back up. And now we're at, we have a capacity where in the center, we could have so many people and, and remain in compliance and also Zoom. So people have options now and people are starting to come back around and, and seek service more.
Is there, if you have clients that don't have access to internet, how are they provided?
By phone.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we've, we're trying to, we actually have been asked to do a caregiver support group. I think there's one coming up in Milton for the Council on Aging. And some of those individuals do not have Zoom. So we're going to be doing it by phone. We've also been doing a lot of orientation and coping groups with school departments. And that's been, that's been done by Zoom. But now we're reaching out to kids and youth as well. And some of it's done by phone.
Yep, okay. And, and that's still, you're still not losing anyone, you know, who don't, who don't have access to internet. You're, you're able to get them all in one way or the other.
We're trying really hard. We are trying really, really hard to get those individuals to participate somehow. We're trying to think of strategies and think outside of the box all the time as, as a team and as a group as well. So a lot, a lot of the calls I've been getting lately are from school, school departments. You know, guidance counselors not seeing kids. You know, just not even on Zoom anymore. And they're so concerned. So we actually have a youth task force and we're coming up with some strategies on how we can get a hold of those kids and get them back. It's, you know, it's, it's a really scary time. And our, our coping strategies and our groups are, they talk a little bit about that and they talk about what we can do and how we can go ahead and manage this time as well, you know? So I really, you know, I'm a firm believer of like passing on the word and letting them know this service is available, it's free, we don't charge anything. And if you know of an individual, a school department, an organization, anyone who needs help, please let them know that we're here and we will, we will be happy to help them.
And you have been in contact with the Fall River School Department? I'm assuming you've been in touch with superintendent and all?
So I, I'm, I'm not sure about that, Counselor. I, I, so we have a team, right? And there's certain things that we, you know, we do a lot of emails, a lot of calls. And I know that we've sent a lot of emails, a lot of calls to the Fall River area. I can't say right now who has gotten back to us. I can tell you this, we have reached out to a lot of reps, senators, mayors, and we don't always get those calls back or those emails are not sent back to us saying, hey, thank you, we're going to use you guys. So, you know, it's, it's important to get that word out there. So, you know, they can help, you know, the people they're serving.
Absolutely, and I fully understand what you're saying. With that, I yield, Counselor.
Well, you know, you know, with that, I'm even happier that we were able to have this time and that you were able to join us so you could get your message out. And so people do realize that you're there to help in, in many capacities. This, this was really, this was great. Vice President Lambo, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I don't, it was a lot of information, it was all, it was all great information also. I'm glad you did schedule this, this week.
Yeah, I, I think this actually far surpassed my, my expectations, honestly. Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, we, we don't want to, but I feel like I could go on for a greater, a far greater amount of time, but yeah, this was absolutely great. I do have, I see, if you don't mind for one second, I do have a couple of questions that were sent to me, which would be addressed to Tess Curran, because I see she's still there. The individual wants to know three things. When you test positive and you're quarantined, how long do you test positive? Which I know it varies from person to person, but I'll let you address that. After you contract COVID, how many, you know, do you get it again? How long before somebody would get it again? Or do we, we probably don't even have the, the, the facts on, just on that. And somebody who's contracted it, you know, should they wait to get a vaccine? Should they get a vaccine anyways? So those are basically the three questions in a nutshell that this individual asked.
Sure, so the, the first question is, if you test positive, we don't encourage an individual to get retested for up to 90 days after initially testing positive. And that's because what we found in the spring when the release from isolation, and just so that we're on the same page in terms of language, quarantine is for individuals who are a contact of a confirmed case. And isolation is for individuals who are COVID-positive. And individuals who are COVID-positive have to be in isolation for a minimum of 10 days and with improvement and/or with improvement of symptoms. So the, the 10 days is really set for people who are asymptomatic and they test positive. Through contact tracing, around that day 10, we, either the local health department or the CTC, the Community Tracing Collaborative, checks in and gets a sense of have your symptoms improved? They don't have to all be resolved because oftentimes we find that people have a lingering cold, cough, excuse me. So it's, it's with improvement of symptoms. So say I'm COVID-positive, at the 10-day mark, I still have a lot of symptoms, they haven't gotten any better. My isolation period extends, usually we do it at about a three-day increment. Then I'm followed up with on day 13. If my symptoms have improved at that point, then I'm released from isolation. And so it's a symptom-based release, it's not a test-based release. Because as I was starting to say in the spring, when we were learning about this, it was a test-based release from isolation. And the, the State Department, the CDC, they all found that people were testing positive for up to 90 days after their initial test. And that's why it's discouraged, we discourage people from getting multiple tests if they test positive and getting tested multiple times to see if they're still positive or not. Because the likelihood is that you will remain positive. So that's kind of the, the first part of your question. The only, just caveat on that, the only way, reason we would recommend somebody gets retested within that 90-day window. And the data's changing here, so this is just kind of this moment in time, would be if somebody was knowingly re-exposed to a COVID-positive individual and/or their symptoms have completely resolved and then they develop a new bout of COVID-like symptoms. So that's the only reason why somebody should get retested at this point. Sorry, can you remind me?
The recommendation on the vaccine for somebody who has had COVID and recovered from it.
Yeah, so, so, and, and the data's still, I guess to preface this, I would encourage an individual to speak with their primary care physician. However, the, the data indicates that there, there may be that 90-day kind of immunity in a sense, and, and use that word in quotes, that they are, are indicating that if somebody has tested positive within 90 days, they may want to consider getting the vaccine at the end of that 90-day timeframe. Because it seems, the data indicates that there, there may be this short window of a reduced risk of, of infection. And so to kind of get your coverage there and then get the vaccine and be covered, you know, we don't really know how long that vaccine is going to cover us. That that's, that's some of the guidance. But again, I would encourage anybody to speak with their primary care doctor. And then was there one more question? Sorry.
One minute. I think that basically covered it. Because two of the questions somewhat overlapped to, to a point and I think that basically covered all of it. Thank you very much.
And again, that's just the data that we know of now. It, it's changing so rapidly as we learn more that, like the quarantine guidance changed twice within, you know, a two or three-week timeframe. So things are developing quickly and as, as more people get vaccinated, as more information comes out, then, then we'll be better able to provide, you know, information that's available to us all.
Counselor Lee?
Thank you, I'm good.
Does any, do any of our providers have any other comments or any thoughts that have come to mind at this point? And does anybody else have any questions? Okay, with that, I'd like to thank all of you and again, wish you all Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And hopefully we're going to go into a better season and, and come out of this craziness. Something none of us have ever experienced before. Now, I have one question for the clerk. I'm not sure how to, if, if it would be a form of a motion. I would like to have a subsequent meeting so that, you know, we can address, you know, issues of, you know, suicide, homelessness, homelessness, youth violence, hunger, et cetera, and bring in other entities and, and other partners, again, to provide information to the public and to try to, you know, reach out to, to people in need. Would we do that in some form of a motion? How would I go about that?
Well, point of, point of information, I, I think because we're on the verge of voting a new council presidency in and we probably can't schedule anything ahead of time right now, right? I'm assuming?
Correct, we may want to wait a few days. But if you were looking to invite specific entities for various other issues to discuss than was in this resolution, you could just file another resolution at an upcoming meeting with all the specific people that you'd like to bring in to discuss these various matters.
Very good, I just wanted to, you know, address that now while, while we're in the midst of having this discussion, so. Okay, then, I guess with that, we would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
On the motion to adjourn, Counsel Liberty Lambo?
Yes.
Counsel Lee?
Yes.
Chair Dion?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.